Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission Meeting. The time is now 5:35 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission. We do have Commissioner Mesmer hasn't joined us yet, but we do have a quorum. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we approach Veterans Day this evening, we're going to do a prayer for our veterans. Oh God, our heavenly Father, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries. May those who have made the ultimate sacrifice rest forever in your holy presence. Comfort the families who mourn and are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and friends. Amen.
Flight of allegiance?
Flight of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a city, if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 All right, moving on.
Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's Announcements. Mayor, do you have any announcements to disclose?
I do have a brief announcement. November is adoption, a national adoption month, and I just want to encourage everyone to, if you have an opportunity, we do have some wonderful organizations here in our community. We have Foster Angels of South Texas and the Heart Gallery of South Texas. You can find them both online. You can Google and you'll see their website. There are over 250 children here in South Texas waiting for their forever homes, so I encourage you, if you have it in your heart, to look at that website, share it with your friends, your family, anyone that's interested in adoption. They're children of all ages. There are so many misconceptions out there and barriers or perceived barriers to adoption, but it is a very reasonable process and it is attainable for anyone that has a home, that is willing to provide a loving home to these children. So I encourage you again to, it's Foster Angels of South Texas or the Heart Gallery of South Texas, and you can find all the information on there. They do a wonderful job of portraying the children, a little summary of each of the kids that are waiting for either to be adopted or obviously foster as well. So I encourage everyone to do that and share that information. Thank you.
Item 3B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, you have anything to announce?
Yes, I do. This week is a birding festival. For those of you not familiar with the festival, it is a premier festival in the United States, not just Texas. It started today, but it goes Thursday through Sunday, so if you have an opportunity, it'll be at the Harlingen Convention Center with lots of tours of birds around the valley. So make sure you can attend. And also, the Mexican Council will be here on Saturday, November the 9th, at the Hilton Garden Inn from 9:00 to 2:00. For those of you that need any help from the Mexican Council, make sure you can stop by to visit with them. They're going to have their mobile office here, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Item 3C, city commission member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
I would just like to recognize and thank, I know we have at least one person here who worked the elections over the past two weeks. Incredible numbers, most probably, and obviously in my time here in Harlingen for the past 24 years, but well done to all of them. I mean, huge numbers of people, long lines, but everybody kept them moving as fast as they could, and I think it was a great event for the city and for the state and for the country that we had to turn out that we had, so well done. Voting is critical.
And I'll just echo, sorry, on that note, that I spoke with Remy this morning in regards to the turnout, because I was so impressed with Cameron County's initiative of allowing folks to vote anywhere within the county, and I think that that made the difference.
That was huge.
And so, over 20, I think it's a 21,000 people from the city of Harlingen voted in the Harlingen election, and that is historic. So it's amazing, and I think that partnership with Cameron County, so. And I just want to commend Commissioner Morales and Commissioner Bettis for having, and I don't think we were here, but moving the elections, obviously, from May to November, did, it comes with its challenges, I will say that. However, that also contributed to the high voter turnout, so.
Three quick announcements. I want to thank Oscar and Manny, Oscar Garcia and Manny. With code enforcement, we did our first neighborhood revitalization walk. We made some great notes. I'm really pumped. We'll be doing a presentation or a conversation about what we are proposing. I would love to have more community input, what you all think we need to do for your neighborhoods. Second is, if you guys saw it in the Valley Morning Star, I think last week, they promoted a location here in Harlingen called Entree Film Center. If you guys haven't gone, it's a fantastic spot. It's on Jackson. It's like an art center where they digitize your old videos, like your family videos and all that, and really are promoting film in Harlingen. And lastly, I know people have asked, but we had a meeting last week on Commerce Street in our improvements, in January 23rd of 2025. That's where we'll be having a big meeting for the whole committee, or the whole community, to come and participate. So I look forward to seeing you all there, and I hope to have some good ideas for you guys, because as you guys can imagine, the intersection in front of Valley Morning Star is like Swiss cheese, and that's something we need to fix. And so we look forward to presenting some good ideas for y'all's consideration, January 23rd, 2025. If the date changes, we'll let you all know. Thank you.
Swiss cheese?
It's crazy, but I love it, but you know.
As long as you go like this.
None at this time, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to remember the passing of a beautiful woman that passed away just recently, this past Saturday. Her name was Tina Puente. She was a longtime member of our Community Development Board. She was the mother of one of our former commissioners and an aunt of one of our current commissioners, me. She was a woman that loved life. She loved life. She loved Harlingen. She was involved in many different charitable causes, in her church, and she's someone that...
She was Miss Grately.
Yeah, she'll be Miss Grately. That's it.
Moving on to item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. Item 4A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we have brought with us Athena. Athena is a healer mix. She's about three to four years old. She's fully vaccinated. We've already had her spayed. She's very energetic, loves to run and play in the side yard there at the shelter, and she is looking for her forever home. Anybody, anybody who is looking for a forever pet, for a loving pet, is welcome to go by the shelter at 1106 Markowski, or give them a call at 216-5250. I would also just like to say that Franklin has been adopted, our pet that we had here two weeks ago. He has also been adopted. So far, we've got a really good track record with the pets that we bring to commission meetings, so we hope to continue that tradition with Athena. Athena has been with us since August 5th, so she has been with us for a good little bit, so she is looking for her forever home.
That's fantastic.
Shannon, can you also mention about this Saturday?
So this Saturday, we, the animal shelter will be going out to PetSmart, and they will be holding an off-site adoption event. They will have 10 dogs there that'll all be up for adoption, and our goal is to come back to the shelter with none. So we hope to see everybody out there to visit with the dogs and hopefully find your next best friend.
What were the times again? I'm sorry?
For Saturday, it will be 12 to 3.
10 to 2.
10 to 2, sorry. We've got a lot of things planned for November, so they're kind of blurred together right now. We have something planned for every Saturday, just about every Saturday this month, so.
Do you have another pet behind you?
This one's being fostered. I bring her to work with me, and she hangs out with us, and I didn't want to leave her there by herself today, so she came out to hang out with us.
Oh, so you're her foster mom?
Yeah. I wanted to foster to adopt, so.
Well, I will tell you, when you foster, right, they guilty, right, they end up staying home, yeah, with you. Okay, awesome, incredible. You got photos, Calista?
Yes.
Athena, right?
Yes.
And so we hope that those that are at home will contact the shelter and adopt Athena. She's pretty.
Yes.
And we'll ask you to stay up there, because our next presentation from Calista has to do with y'all.
All right, so thank you, everyone, for being here with us today. This week, we are celebrating National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week, and we have a proclamation, and I will read it as follows before I turn it back over to Shannon to say a few words. Whereas the Humane Society of the United States founded National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week in 1996, this week is to acknowledge and promote the role of animal shelters in communities across the country and to encourage the public to get acquainted with their local animal shelter, to learn how they can save lives of animals. And whereas the Harlingen Animal Shelter helps both animals and people in many ways, reuniting lost pets with their owners, rescuing abandoned animals, caring for animals, educating the public, and matching up the fur babies with their forever homes. And whereas, in a short period, the Harlingen Animal Shelter staff has worked tremendously with rescues, fosters, and community to service the animals left behind and turned in by owners at the shelter. Whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes the Harlingen Animal Shelter staff for their many dedicated hours of service they perform in serving the animal shelter animals, and for fulfilling their commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And now therefore, I, Norma Seppulila, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, Texas, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim November 3rd through the 9th, 2024, as National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week. Shannon?
We just, again, want to thank all the staff. That quite often goes unrecognized, the number of hours they put in, the dedication that they put in. Their heart is on the line each and every day for every one of the animals in the shelter, and they want the absolute best for them, each and every one of them, every single day. So we definitely want to give them this recognition. We want to thank the commission and the mayor for all the support y'all give us. Without your support, we wouldn't be where we are. We continue to strive to improve each and every day. We don't ever feel anything is ever perfect. We want to improve everything all the time, and we will keep working to do that every single day. So, thank you.
Well, Shannon and staff, we, I think I speak for everyone in the commission. We are just in, continue to be impressed with all of your hard work, and I know that it isn't always easy. We acknowledge and recognize your long hours, and it is difficult to be in the position sometimes that y'all are in, and so we appreciate you. I know that you put in all of your hard work and your heart. I've spoken, I know Eli, you joined us rather, when was it, like, 2:00?
9:00.
And I was just really blown away with all of your experience and all of the different roles that you have had in different areas, and you bring a wealth of knowledge to the shelter. I think the staff is just doing amazing. You have an incredible team, and I thank you for all of your hard work. I don't think people realize that within a short period of time, there's been over 300 adoptions in, out of the shelter, and that gives, that number gives me pause, right, because why do we have 300-plus animals that need to be adopted in South Texas? That's a big number, and so I really hope that the community comes out and supports the shelter, so that way we can start to lower those numbers. And so appreciate everything that you're doing. Know that we have your, we have your back, and we support you 100%.
I also want to make a point, that I'm very proud that, one of my former students, I'm not going to mention where she's at, but she now works for the Harlingen Animal Shelter, and I'm super proud of her. And thanks for being part of the team.
And you know, and the other thing too, I think the community, the support that has from businesses, we want to thank them, and I hope that y'all are doing that. I had a conversation, I think it was Harlingen Medical, they said that they had donated a ton of food, and that the entire staff was excited about that opportunity to be able to help the shelter, and they kind of made it as a competition amongst the staff. And so, there is a ton of support out there, but I know sometimes it's difficult when, you know, you are working and there may be, I mean, just to be honest, there may be some criticism, and there's, you know, things that are beyond your control, but we know that you love animals, and we are so proud of you. And so, this is your month, and I'm going to stop talking so we can take a picture with the proclamation. All right, if the commission can join me. We can make that happen.
Exactly.
We're here to help.
All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on to item five, citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Here we have a total of five submissions for today. We will begin with Ms. Rebecca Kinsley.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Rebecca Kinsley, and I live at 3401 West Business 83. It's the Palm Gardens Motor Home and Mobile Home Park in Harlingen. We are having an issue that just, we can't seem to get resolved. There was a business that opened right down the street from us called the Deep End Bar. I know a lot of people in our park like to go to this establishment. We are all for the establishment. The problem that we're having is that they have a DJ on their patio that starts on Friday and Saturday nights between 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock and plays music until 2:00 AM. They also do it on Wednesday nights, and it doesn't generally start until about 11:00 on Wednesday nights, and goes till about 12:00 to 1:00, somewhere in there. It is so loud that it literally shook a picture off of the wall of my house. We are, you know, we're a 55-plus community. There's a lot of people, elderly people in there. Plus, side of that is, a lot of them are hard of hearing, so it's not so bothersome to them, but there are a huge number of us in there in the park that are just, our quality of life has just gone downhill since this establishment has opened. We called the police to try to get help, them to go out there and ask them to turn down the volume. Some of the officers have been wonderful about going and talking to them, and it's greatly appreciated, although I will say, generally, within an hour of calling them, they might have turned down the music, but they'll turn it, then it will come back on within the hour, and the bass gets turned up deeper every time. And we, there have been nights where we've called, and it's not just myself and my wife, but other people in the park that have called three, four, or five times. And again, it's the same cycle every time. We've also been told by some officers that there's really nothing they can do. All they can do is go and ask them to turn down the volume, because they have a right to run their business. From what we've done as far as reading in the city ordinances, it appears that there is a city noise ordinance that we would think should stop the music at a certain time at night. Also, reading in the Texas, the alcoholic beverage and the liquor laws, the section 4.4, chapter 4, under the alcoholic beverages, there's, it specifically talks about establishments that sell alcohol not being able to amplify music and do different things that affects the quality of life for the neighborhoods around them. The only other thing I want to say is there's, and it can't just be us. Between us and where this establishment is, there is a low-income housing development that is full of mothers, fathers, children that have to be, you know, in school on Thursdays, hardworking people that are still of working age and must be up and going to work. So if we could get any help on this, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsley. We have your phone number, and I'll make sure that staff gets out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Tucket Drive. Well, I really don't have too much. I never have too much to say. Just a few things that I found a little bit somewhat concerning, and probably because I've been here a long time and stuff, and over the decades, literally. One thing that caught my eye was this thing going on with the mall. And apparently, we hired some law firm to do some research, or whatever it is they do. And I'm going back to the days when I worked a lot with Mr. Bilby, you know, very good attorney, city attorney. We were able to hammer out a lot of things, and we're going into some litigation issues with the city. And I'm wondering, was it really necessary to go that route? Or, you know, maybe a little bit confused, or not up to date on what exactly the city attorney's role is, as far as, you know, looking into the current situation. I know some business owners that have actually taken a hard hit because of what's going on with the mall. It's really a bad situation. Another thing that I wanted to mention is, since I have a lot of business associates up and down the valley, all over the state, basically, in a lot of different places, honestly. I do know that Bronsville, for the downtown merchants, they provide certain incentives for assisting those businesses that are struggling. And I don't know if their fundings come from the EDC, or from whatever the case may be. I think the EDC should be more involved with helping the businesses that are struggling, because, again, last time I mentioned that I knew of eight small businesses that were getting ready to close shop and fold. They don't have the same support that corporate entities do. Corporate America, yes, write off the losses, fire a couple of hundred people, and they're good to go. I've seen it happen all the time, but small businesses like myself, we take hard hits. Fortunately, I'm very well diversified, so I can sustain, but I own most of the stuff where I'm at, so I don't have to worry about paying rent. And we got a lot of good, small businesses trying to make a go at it here in Harlingen. I always hear how hard it is to do business here in Harlingen. And back in the day, I would tend to agree, but I think we're rounding that corner, where we're trying to attract the right businesses to get the right things going. And we don't want to become stagnant and that. So anything we can do to help the small businesses, and the community in general is always a positive thing. We don't want people leaving, we want people staying, and we want to keep that momentum going. And I think I beat the buzzer, because I have to go. So thank you very much for your time. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Next, we have Robert A. Leffwitch.
Robert Leffwitch, 909 East Parkwood. I just wanted to come today because, you know, we just had some elections, and we've had some forums where some of the incumbent candidates are still giving the public the same misinformation about the taxes, about the property taxes. We know that the state legislation has passed what they call the tax, the truth in taxation, and therefore, the city official notice, it says, notice of public hearing on tax increase. And then at the bottom, it tells you, well, that the tax increase was $2.5 million for this last year, this last year. So we keep hearing, and we keep seeing this document provided by the city, the mayor included, some of the incumbent commissioners. Well, we lowered the rates, the lowest rate in 24 years. Well, let's look at the same document, and I'm not going to disagree with that. But you know what, our certified totals have gone from 3.7 billion to 5.2 billion. So isn't that disingenuous when you say, well, we've lowered the rate, and we all know we don't pay the rate, right? We don't pay the rate. We pay a levy. We pay a tax levy, right? We know that. And guess who sets the certified tax totals? The appraisal district, right? But they don't spend the money, Mr. Mesmer, Mr. Pettis? Y'all do, right? Y'all spend the money. So what's the new levy? The levy is increased by $2.5 million for this year. Because, Mr. Pettis, since you've been in office, the levy has gone up $6 million. Sure, you've lowered the rate, but the certified tax rules have gone up. Look, this is truth in taxation. If the city's required to officially declare that as a tax increase, when you're on the campaign trail, have some integrity. Identify and own the tax increase. Don't tell people at the forums that you go to, or the doors that you knock on, that you, this is the lowest rate in 24 years. Mr. Mesmer, this is the lowest, it's the lowest rate in 16 years. I have a First Amendment right to say what I'm going to say.
Make sure that you're addressing that, your comments to the entire commission.
I am, well.
Just to the commission.
I will. I'll put all the commission on notice. When y'all run next year, don't do what people are doing, what your incumbent fellow commissioners are doing this year. Own the $6 million tax increase. I heard, I heard something else that came out last week in one of the forums about the operational expenses of the Humane Society. There was a question at the forum by a UTRGV moderator that said, hey, well, financial documents say that the estimated monthly operational expense is $60,000 a month. Commissioner Pettis, I think you denied that was accurate, but you didn't know what it was. Do y'all not know what the costs are of this new shelter, the monthly cost or the comparative cost from what the RGV Humane Society was costing? I can imagine that it's a lot more, considering that the UTR, the RGV Humane Society was matched with a $600,000 public contribution from donations that they had throughout the year and through their annual gala. There's no way that y'all are, that y'all are underspending what you were, and we're seeing that in the tax increase. Thank you.
Next, we have Desi Martinez.
Good evening. I'm glad you had a long weekend here, my friend. I'm a little tired.
Give us a minute, I have a matter.
On the, on the agenda? I can call you on the item.
Yeah.
You want, you want to do this, and the item, or you want to be called on the item itself, or you want to do it now?
I can call you on the item.
Yeah.
You want to do this and the item, or you want to be called on the item itself, or you want to do it now?
I don't know. My office says we do.
Turn it.
And I told him I have three to four to five minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. It's a lot of good info going. Mayor, I'd like to address three or four points that are very important because timing of, as it was said, spending and developing projects start October 1st, so does grants, et cetera. And then you do all these projects, and then in April, you start the budget again. And I know the process. I've worked for people in this area of work. But I want to talk in one particular, and not directing to any individual, but because it's on the agenda submitted by the city manager on the local hotel occupancy tax, occupancy tax overview by the controller and their state statutes that says they are eligible activities. I could have told him, yes, you can do the Casa del Sol, but that's what, the whole basis of putting a million dollars versus comparing to what we're doing in a comprehensive plan right now for downtown, that we need more input a few weeks, a couple of months with our input. Those of us that don't, economic development in private and public institutions or organizations that know better. The problem with downtown, for example, it's not a problem, it's just the economy, is that you have a census tract, Mr. Lopez, the main census tract in the area is 27,400. It's slower than San Benito at 35,000, Los Fresnos downtown at 46,000, Browso, X thousand more. It's one of the lowest compared to almost the Colonias. What is downtown problem is economics. By utilizing other methods and other important grants that are out there to match, an EDC 4B to match and bring in more traffic, the problem is traffic and customers, and that's what it's up to. That's why CBS left, that's why the bank teller left, et cetera, IBC left, et cetera. We gotta build the economy. I know you're doing the re-realization, talk, talk, talk down the streets, but there are better methods. I've done them, and I hope to help in that regard. I hope you table this again, and we send it to the ADHAC committee, and I can volunteer my time and others that do in this business. That's one. The second one is, of course, the report that Orlando will bring to you of the EDC. As you can see, I reviewed quickly because it wasn't posted, incident information and reports wasn't posted until yesterday at noon, and I was working, and I still work. That's 72, going on 73, that's right. And the point is this, he's, I appreciate Orlando's effort and your all meeting, but there's other opportunities to bring primary jobs is that main goal. I was in the EDC. I'm never invited to participate or what have you. Primary jobs in agribusiness, in manufacturing, wholesale, transportation, you can read it right here, call centers. And we had four call centers refunded back 15 years ago, and we now got two. We haven't even made an assessment of that, and two empty buildings. So we need to, part of our campus plan is economic development. We need to do that before we start spending money. And the Casa del Sol can be used into another model, transportation. You have land over there that you bought by the expressway. Why didn't we move it out from downtown? That's your original transportation hub. We moved workforce from down Harrison Street to the other side of town, looks like a big old shed, and we moved social security out, we moved traffic out. As an economist, we should be moving traffic in and accommodating traffic, customers, and doing revaluation of the neighborhoods around and providing primary jobs so that people can have more income, not as in the report that he provides that says more sales tax. We already are a regional center when we brought in Sams. Best rule has its goods and bads, but it happened, and it's done, and it's working. That's why the West Side is developing. Now, we economists, we're not historians, we're not, you know, we're not in the education budget, et cetera, we're not attorneys. We work on numbers. And I asked Orlando to please give me some info, to break it down. What is the demand of the numbers you gave in the report? It's just a blog. I don't need private information.
I'm just.
One more minute, if I may. The last one, Harlingen Water Works is so important, and Harlingen Water Works, what is on the agenda today, that you pass it, of course. Necessary thing of eligibility of water and sewer and drainage, particular water and sewer, that's one of our biggest hits that's coming, 120 million in three projects they have on the docket. This is 25 of them. It's important that you, your lobbyists, it's the criteria that's creating the problem of us not getting more grant and therefore more loan. Our lobbyist has to kick in, with all of us, with our new senator, to get that criteria changed so we can get more grant for our projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mesmer.
Oh, and you all have a good. Thanks, you guys.
Next, we have Ms. Joyce Hamilton.
Hello, Madam Mayor and all commissioners. I'm Joyce Hamilton. I live at 1617 Sunnyside Drive here in Harlingen. I'm just here to talk very briefly, I won't take the whole time given, regarding the drainage project, the city drainage project that's going on. And my home and the home next to me are in the sacrifice zone for that, I'll just put it that way. But here's my message. It's not a, I'm not complaining at all. It has been, it has been a lot of work dealing with having trees moved. My yard is a certified wildlife habitat. It's certified under Texas Parks and Wildlife and the National Wildlife Federation. So for 20 years since I moved into the brand-new house on a dirt lot, I've created a certified wildlife habitat, and it's been a lot of work, and my plants are really important to me. So what I'm here to talk about is how Science Consulting, well, consulting, Science Utility Contracting Company has really done a good job. And I, you know, just really think that that's something that the city commission should hear. I live in District 5, and I actually did talk with Rainey very briefly on the phone one day about the project. And wanted to just let it be known that all the concerns I've had from the very beginning had to do with a palm tree, a 20-year-old palm tree that needed to be moved because it was right against the fence, needed to be moved six feet over, and a pretty rare native tree called a Vasey's Adelia, which is, Ramsey Park has quite a few, but you don't see them much of anywhere else. And I grew that for 15 years, and it's just a beautiful specimen. It would have been chopped down and moved, chopped down or, well, destroyed. And so Madi Bell Science is the person from the company who has been overseeing this entire project. And every time I've had a question or a concern, she has been more than willing to call me right back immediately or even come over and look at the things that need to be done and make sure they're done. And I was at the Birding Festival today doing four hours of volunteer work, and thank you someone for mentioning that earlier today, rushed home before getting ready to come over here. And I had called Madi Bell early this morning, and here's all of this equipment, moving all of the massive amount of brush that has piled up over the last three weeks. And we're talking trees, whole trees, shrubs, everything all along that property line that had been dug up and, you know, piled up for quite a while. And I called her just to find out what's the timeline on this because this stuff really needs to move, and there was all the equipment moving it when I got home this afternoon. So I'm just here to thank you for selecting a really good company. I think they've done a great job of managing the drainage project going through a residential neighborhood, like right smack through a residential neighborhood. So it'll soon be over. I will relax a little bit more, but thank you for having a good company handle this.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce.
That concludes our citizen communications.
I think you have one more.
He wants to wait for 7A and the consent.
Okay.
So we're gonna go ahead and move on to Item 6, approval of minutes. Item 6A, regular meeting of September 18th, 2024, and joint meeting of the EDC Board of Directors and City Commission, September 24, 2024.
Is there any amendments to the minutes? Not? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And as for Items A and B?
Okay. Item 7, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business, were included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
So there was a request to remove Item 7A. Is there any others that need to be pulled?
7E.
7A and 7E, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the adoption of the 2024 International Codes and the 2023 National Electrical Codes, applicant, City of Harlingen, planning and development. And we do have Mr. Julio Carranza that would like to speak on this topic.
Okay. Mr. Carranza.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioner. My name's Julio Carranza, and I do a little bit of development here in Harlingen. I've got about 30 acres, and I'm a home builder as well. And I want to commend you for trying to be on top of the most current codes. But with current codes comes a lot of responsibility, although we want to be up to date with everything that's new. I don't think both the builders or the inspectors are up to date. It takes a lot of training. The City of Harlingen has made huge, and I want to emphasize the word huge, moves and headway in these past couple of years and few years where you've seen more people, more builders building and developers developing. There is a comprehensive plan meeting with the EDC. I thought it would be a good idea to also discuss this and see what other input there may be from local builders and the staff, and what type of training, how you're going to implement it, maybe in phases, but it's very, very strict, right? Things that require different type of material that is not readily available, right? And then the cost to your citizens, right? Everything is going up. If the builder pays more, just like any other business, who gets the cost? And that's the home buyer, your citizens. So something to consider. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carranza. Before we have, before we hear from Javier, if we do hear from Javier, is there a motion to table this item?
Mayor, I would just like to say that the reason this is on the agenda is because we were visited by the ISO who came to Harlingen. We were actually the first city that they visited in the Rio Grande Valley, so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but.
Who visited?
I'm sorry?
Who visited?
The ISO.
What's ISO?
The insurance society organization or something to that effect. And we get monitored on two different prongs. One is the fire protection, which also includes the water supply, and then the other is the building codes. And we were given a subpar rating on the ISO based on our building codes. And so that, in turn, will reflect on higher insurance rates for the residents of Harlingen to have to buy fire protection. And so they told us that we needed to increase the building codes that we had to the newest level, which is the ones that we're adopting. Now, this didn't come from staff, this came from the ISO, so it.
Yes, this is not city-generated.
No, that was done by the ISO, who said, "Look, in order for you to bring your ISO from subpar rating to acceptable levels, you have to adopt the latest building codes." And so I think that may have been explained when Javier came up here. It doesn't take effect immediately. I think there is a, what, six-month? There's a six-month window from today, if they're adopted today, before they're actually implemented. And that's to get the contractors ready, and it's not going to impact any subdivision that has already begun the process of subdividing. And, actually, no, anybody that's already built, obtained the building code or has submitted plans for a permit. So this won't impact everybody that's currently in the system or the pipeline. It's only for new construction coming up after the six-month period.
After the six months.
Right. And so if we don't implement them now, we're gonna have to do that eventually down the line, otherwise, we're gonna get dinged from the ISO on our.
And so what is the plan, Javier, to, it looks like that's something you have to do, and so what is the plan to?
The plan is to have a series of workshops where we're gonna invite the contractors to meet with us so that we can explain the changes. Any permits within this six months are still gonna be under the current codes, so they'll have six months to submit new permits to be under the older codes. But we are gonna have some workshops to explain to the contractors what the changes are.
And I think one of the things to point out is that most cities in the valley have the codes that we currently have right now.
Correct.
And so as they get visited by the ISO, there's going to be changes from those cities adopting the newer codes. So we were the first one that were visited by the ISO, so that's.
Actually, we're the second, San Benito was first.
Was first.
And so they already adopted the 2024s.
Okay.
For the second. But eventually, all the other cities will do it, as the ISO pays them a visit.
Right. And so we are recommending that we adopt them because we're gonna have to have them eventually, and so.
Otherwise, everybody's insurance rates go up.
Understood.
Excuse me, Javier. How fast are we, the city's gonna be certified to adopt those codes? Not the contractors, the city.
So that's what this is for, to adapt the ordinance, to adapt the new codes, but it's in the ordinance that it will take effect in six months from today.
Do you have a plan set up for this next six months, or is it just out there?
No, so we do have plans to have some workshops where we're gonna invite the contractors to meet with us to explain the changes.
Do you have tentative dates?
Not yet. I'm working on that with the building official. I'm looking at a workshop in January, I think one in February, and maybe one in March.
So we won't do anything in the next month?
Yeah, with the holidays, it's gonna be difficult to get the contractors.
Our staff is capable of implementing the changes. They're familiar with what the codes require. As a matter of fact, we had a workshop before we adopted and recommended the first reading and talked about some of the changes that were upcoming.
So staff has already had the training?
They go through a series of trainings throughout the year, so they're, these are not that drastic from what we currently have in place now. At least, that's what I was told by staff.
Yes, it's nothing major, major.
Right. So we think that the transition should be pretty easy for everybody.
If it turns out it doesn't, it's not that easy? Takes longer than six months to implement?
It won't take us longer than that to have the, yeah, because all we're gonna be doing is having workshops on the actual code itself. And so that's something that we'll be inspecting for whenever they come in for inspection dealing with electrical and any other code that was changed, so.
How many workshops are you gonna have for the contractors?
So we're planning one in January, one in February, and one in March.
So three?
Correct.
And everybody will be on board, all the contractors?
So the workshop is to guide them on the changes. The ordinance will be in place, and it will take effect six months from today if adopted.
So if I just, so that I understand correctly, this is required, it's not coming from staff?
No, it's, the ISO, the ISO is telling us, if you don't do. No, it's, the ISO, the ISO is telling us, if you don't do this, everybody's insurance rates will go up because we're gonna give you a negative rating.
For, for, for the fire component only. Is that correct?
For your home, home and business insurance, for your, for your structures. We all, most of us have insurance for our buildings, so our cost of that insurance may increase if this is not-
And, and on, on the fire side, if you may recall, we just went from a three to a two earlier this year. And so at one point, only McAllen was, was the only two. Now it's McAllen, Harlingen, Mission, and I think there's one more.
And two is a good thing?
Two is a great thing, yes.
Yeah, the lower the number, the better.
Yeah. Matter of fact, and I think the only one that's closest to us is outside of, north of Corpus, correct? I don't think there's any one in, in the Royal Grand Valley.
Hey, Dustin, what are your thoughts? How'd you pop up here?
Thought you were gonna get away with no comment. I saw that.
No, we, we really have no, once the roads are paved, we really have no input after that. So I said, I'm out of my depth on anything to do with this.
This is building.
This is only for building construction.
Now, and, and, and I, I appreciate, I know that this seems to be something that we have to adopt, but I think probably best practice is moving forward is to, before it comes to the commission for adoption, maybe reaching out to the builders and getting their input and educating the community, right, and to, that this is coming. So that way, we have more, more, more input. And, you know, we want to continue that reputation of a positive place. You know, we want to make sure that folks know that we want to be, that we are pro-development. You know, Mr. Carranza has invested a lot in our, in our community. We want to be good partners. And I think it, it wouldn't hurt for us to reach out in advance and letting them know that this is something that's just focused on Harlingen, and, and it's going to be kind of a region-wide or statewide change. And so that way, at least they can plan accordingly. Because obviously, this is, I truly believe that additional cost to the builders means additional cost to our residents. And so we want to minimize that wherever we can. And, and so hopefully, these workshops, we can announce them in a way where we reach everyone and take attendance. So that way, we know who's gone to the workshop. And then if you have some builders that don't make the workshop and that, you know, because you're the ones that are most familiar with the ones that are in our community, reaching out and a personal invitation might, might, might go a long way. And, and ensuring that all platforms are used to, to send out that invitation.
What I would do also is anybody that's pulled a building permit in the last three months, give them a notice, send them a notice of the upcoming workshops. And then anybody that pulls a permit now, give them a copy.
So by ordinance, we require contractors to get a one-year license. So basically, we're gonna notify everybody that has a current license too.
Okay.
Yes, all of them.
That's, that's a good idea.
And it wouldn't hurt to put an ad in the paper saying, you know, people, future, because there, people are looking into Harlingen.
Actually, there's a, there's a Builders Association, so I'm gonna make sure to advertise there.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. And Melinda?
Okay. Item E, consideration and possible action to approve the installation of speed homes in the following locations. This item was requested by Commissioner Frank Morales and Mayor Protem Rini Perez. It's the five hundred block of West Lincoln Street.
Is there additions, gentlemen?
Yes. I wanted to add Haverford Boulevard between Mid Lane and Dixieland Road.
West side of Little Creek.
Didn't you already do that?
The east side had been done. I got a request for the west side.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two amendments or the two supplemental.
Now, the two amendments aren't guaranteed, right? The city needs to research these two addresses.
Okay. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to item A, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with a request of the mayor or after the, the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item eight A, city manager's report.
I don't have anything.
We had none too. Okay. Moving on to item B, staff reports, investment report for the City of Harlingen for the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four by Robert Rodriguez, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners and staff. This is the quarterly investment report and the annual report. So it includes the, the last month's July, August, and September, and also a report for the entire year, which is included in your packet. I'll give a brief overview of the entire year. So our book value comparative, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. For September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we had seventy four million, eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven compared to seven million, thirty-seven to twenty-seven for the, the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We had interest income earnings for the entire year of three million, seven seventy-four, nine thirty-nine, sixty-one. And because we do invest in treasuries, we had net accretion of four hundred sixty thousand, two twenty-four, bringing our total net income with interest income and accretion of four million, two thirty-five, one sixty-three, sixty-five. Our yield for the year, the average, five point oh nine five percent for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three compared to five point one three four percent for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Our asset allocation, we have about four point one six percent in bank deposits at, at Plains Capital. We have thirteen point four percent at this time in U.S. Treasuries and eighty-two point four five in investment pools, which are at Tex Pool. Our ratings for, for the deposits, of course, the demand deposits, we had about three million, seventy-eight in demand deposits. Our triple A rating for the pools, we had sixty-one million, forty thousand, seven hundred eighty-four, and triple A in our treasuries for nine million, nine eighteen, three forty-three, for a total of seventy-four million, thirty-seven. So ninety-five point eight four percent of our deposits are triple A, and the four point one six percent is in our demand deposits. This is the, the curve of the interest rates starting back in twenty twenty-two. You can see them rise and come to five point six, actually, the city, the average five point one three percent at the end of September twenty twenty-four. And that, that's a quick recap of our deposits and our investments.
Any questions for Robert?
I'll just make a comment that the Federal Reserve has threatened to lower interest rates one or two more times in November and December. So our interest will go down that we'll be making.
Yes, sir. I didn't know that. I knew once, but I didn't think in November and December.
Well.
Or so they say, right?
That's what they say now.
The answer is don't fight the Fed.
Yeah. That's correct.
I like the threatened, too.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Robert.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor may invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and you will be, oops, excuse me, citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. There were no submissions for public hearing comments.
Okay. So we'll just go through these for the record. Item nine A, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of a twelve point forty-five acre tract of land out of block sixty-eight, Paul Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM one oh six, approximately one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five feet east of FM five oh nine. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against, or no one signed up, we will close the public hearing. Item nine B, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-four, twenty-six, East Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal description of Lot One, Block One, CBA subdivision. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will close the public hearing. Item nine C, public hearing for a SUP to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-three oh five, West Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal description of parts of lots one A, one B, and two A, and all of lots three A, three B, and Lot Four, Block Four, Avondale subdivision. This time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against the, this item, we will close the public hearing this time. Item nine D, public hearing for an SUP to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-four, twenty-three, East Tyler Avenue, bearing illegal description of Lot One, Block One, Texmart number thirty-five. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will close the public hearing. And that is all of the public hearings. Melinda?
Moving on to item ten, action items. The City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item ten A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for the voluntary annexation of a twelve point forty-five acre tract of land out of block sixty-eight, Paul Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of Farm Road one oh six, approximately a thousand, two ninety-five feet east of Farm Road five oh nine, applicant White Investments LTD, Planning and Development.
All right. Everybody has their pocket. Is there, do we need the presentation, or is there a motion?
Reading.
Oh, read the caption, sorry.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Whenever you're done reading.
Read the caption.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a twelve point four five acre tract of land at a block, at a block, block sixty-eight, Paul Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM one oh six, approximately one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five feet east of FM five oh nine, binding the land to all of the acts ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right. Just a practical question, right? So the purpose you want to get annexed is because you want police and fire, and you want trash pickup and all that, right? And so let's say in one of those fourplexes or whatever those buildings are in between, there's a break-in, sheriff's office still is gonna have to reply. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be Harlingen jurisdiction.
Yes, there is a portion of Mr. Hammid's property that will stay in the county, which is this portion here.
The sliver.
Yeah. So if anything happens there, it will be the jurisdiction of the county, of the county and not the city.
And so with like the nine one one, the nine one one board and all that, how are they gonna know? Like, nine one one, GIS, all those people? Because I don't want there to be an issue where there's a break-in, and then you're gonna have, and PD will tell you, and, and the sheriff's office will tell you, like, well, nope, that's your call, that's your call, that's your call, right? And I, and I just want to make sure that, that we don't want to have issues with jurisdiction later. HPD accidentally takes a call, and we have issues with arrest, and we have issues with all that stuff later.
Yes, we send the, the annexation ordinances to, to PD, but I need to make sure that they have the latest city limit boundaries. Because, yeah, sometimes there's some confusion. Yeah.
Can we get some confirmation at the next meeting? If this is in other, in other ti, you're saying that potentially others that we've annexed that hasn't been updated? I know they haven't developed yet.
We, we send the ordinances to our engineering department. They are the official keepers of our city limit boundaries, our, our city limit maps. I just need to make sure that the police department and the dispatchers have the, the latest maps to avoid confusion.
I think that's a valid.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah. And we gotta make sure that we notify the Cameron County Emergency Services District that this annexation's happening because of tax purposes. And there's, and there's chapter seven seven five of the Texas Health and Safety Code. There's a very specific way about how the EST needs to be notified. Just FYI. Thank you. I'll, I'll second that motion.
And if you can just confirm for us once that, that's done, so that way we know that it's been done.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. There's a second by-
Commissioner Lopez.
Commissioner Lopez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-four, twenty-six, East Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal description of Lot One, Block One, CBA subdivision, planning and development.
An ordinance submitting the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Seven Eleven to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail GR district located at twenty-four, twenty-six, East Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal subdivision of Lot One, Block One, CBA subdivision, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-three oh five, West Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal description of parts of lots one A, one B, and two A, and all of lots three A, three B, and Lot Four, Block Four, Avondale subdivision, applicant Tim Yoa planning and development.
An ordinance submitting the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Seven Eleven Inc. to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail GR district located at twenty-three oh five, West Loop four ninety-nine, bearing a legal description of part, parts of lots one A, one B, and two A, and all of lots three A, three B, and Lot Four, Block Four, Avondale subdivision, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district located at twenty-four, twenty-three, East Tyler Avenue, bearing a legal description of Lot One, Block One, Texmart number thirty-five, applicant Tim Yoa, planning and development.
An ordinance submitting the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption in a general retail GR district located at twenty-four, twenty-three, East Tyler Avenue, bearing a legal description of Lot One, Block One, Texmax thirty-five subdivision.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E.
Mayor, we want, we want to pass on item E.
Correct. Pass?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Melinda.
That's okay. Okay. Item F, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat of the proposed Skyline District subdivision, bearing a legal description of ten point thirteen acres of land out of block nineteen, Cunningham subdivision, located at the southeast corner of Primeta Road and U.S. Expressway seventy-seven, applicant Moore Land Surveying, Planning and Development.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat of the proposed Dixieland Crossing subdivision, bearing a legal description of nine point sixty-five acres of land out of blocks thirty, forty-three, forty-four, and Canal Row, Howard's Dixieland Heights, number one subdivision, located along the southwest corner of Garrett and Dixieland Roads, applicant Moore Land Surveying, Planning and Development.
And what will be going in here?
So as presented during the rezoning, at the corner there, at the very corner, it's gonna be a commercial plaza. And then the rest are gonna be single-family lots. It's gonna be a gated subdivision. And then on the west side, it's gonna be the assisted living facility that was, that was presented during the rezoning. And the plat note is, is there as per the agreement from the developer. No apartments, no duplexes, no fourplexes.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. I just want to commend Mr. Carranza for all of your community outreach and everything that you did in that area to ensure that the community understood what your vision was, and I know that a lot of them were blown away when they were able to see exactly what you had, and, you know, in store for that area, so we look forward to that, so thank you. And I know this was voluntarily placed to give them more reassurance, so, so thank you for, for doing that.
Have we got more area in District 5, we want to build some more stuff?
Anywhere in the city would be fine.
Item H, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution establishing the 38th Annual Lighting of the Arroyo to be held on December 5, 2024, at McKelvey Park in request for TechDOT, a temporary partial road closure of Business 77 Sunshine Strip for the safety of the public during the event from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item I, consideration and possible action to approve the proposed list of streets for the 2025 Street Improvement Program Project Engineering.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item J, consideration and possible action to authorize a filing of an application for financial assistance with the Texas Water Development Board for funding the construction of priority wastewater capital improvement projects, Harlingen Water Works.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Item K, presentation on fiscal year 23.
Gabe.
Hi, Gabriel.
We, we had that conversation about the ARPA money and waterworks. Have you had, have you resolved everything there?
I believe so, but I'll go to Ron in the morning.
Please do, thank you.
Item K, presentation on fiscal year 23, 24, program of work year-end report and consideration of approval of program of work for fiscal year 24, 25, Orlando Campos.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, for your consideration is the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 program of work for the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. But in addition to that, I've added, or rather, you'll find that program of work in your packages, but, excuse me, in addition to that, I've also provided a final report of our annual work plan for 2023, 2024 fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and/or I'm happy to go through the final report, as well as the annual work plan that is proposed for FY 2025.
Make a motion approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's just a presentation, right? And consideration of approval of, yes, motion approved.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item L, consideration and possible action to allocate 1 million from the hot fund balance for the Casa del Sol renovation project. This item was tabled at the regular City Commission meeting of October 24, 2024, City Manager.
Mayor, we need to take this off the table before.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item is off the table.
One of the questions that came up during the last discussion was the clawback for this particular project for the $1 million. Since that time, we had a meeting with Scott Josloff, who is the president of the Hotel Motel Association, Mark Saucy was in on that conversation, and we asked him about the clawback for this project, and because it is a historic preservation project, there is no clawback provision for the, the $1 million in hotel and street funds that are being spent on this. And I think Mark sent out a letter to the mayor and commission.
The only clawback in that section applies to sports venues.
Sport, yeah, exactly.
Not to historic renovations, so that would not, the city would not be responsible for that in terms of any kind of clawback.
So I think my memory served me well, it was just, we were talking about tennis, and soccer, and all that other stuff.
Yeah, I think you guys had talked about bringing in like a soccer team right there, so, yeah.
So is there, I know we've, this, we've, we've tabled this more than once, is there any other discussion?
Who's going to pick up the, the cost of the, the remaining?
Well, I need to talk to the commission about that. I don't have a presentation for that yet, but I am working on one. But it's going to have to be the city. We, we have applied for funding, we have identified some other funds that are available, but unfortunately, they are really small. I mean, 70,000, I think the highest grant that we discovered was about $100,000. And to try to put together funding from small pots of money like that is going to be inefficient.
And like, I'm in, I'm in favor of it, but I just wanted a question. So are we going to go out for bids for that, or how's that going to work?
No, we, yes, we, we do, what we have to now is, there's, there's a couple of things we need to do right away. One is the engineering design, the other is that the, the building came back positive for asbestos, so we need to remove that, and so that has to be done. And we also go out for vendors to actually do that for us, so we have to get quotes for that.
It's probably going to be a little bit more.
It's probably going to be a lot more, isn't that what happened with the DID building? That we, we didn't anticipate the asbestos, and then it turned out to be.
We, we did. I, all I know is that it came back positive for asbestos, I'm not sure exactly where it's located, but I think that staff is aware, so we'll have to come up with a game plan to actually address that.
And there, and there are companies specifically for asbestos removal in the pavement.
Have you talked to the Brown, Brown, Brown Fields people?
Yes.
What did they say?
They said this wouldn't apply, because when I talked to them in Dallas, they were, the whole process, so the TCEQ has a program called Brown Fields, right? And if the city's going to buy a piece of property, let's say a former gas station, TCEQ will go in, and they will do the analysis for whether there's ground contamination, they'll do remediations and all that, but it's always a field, it's not any actual facility, building, things like that.
That, that's.
In fact, I have already shared an email with, with the staff, I don't know if you got it, but I, I sent it to the staff for us to start identifying, and I would like for you guys to identify in y'all's own districts, brown, potential brownfields, that would, then we can use this program to then get the benefit of it.
And the key for brownfields is that the site has to be contaminated.
Correct.
The Casa del Sol is not considered a contamination site, so.
And the woman, because I thought about that specifically for, remember how we're looking at getting the gas tanks for Commerce Street, and then the one over there for the, and I thought about that, and she was like, no, because you already own the property, right? She was like, it's a property that you guys are looking at buying.
Right.
Right? That was the hook there.
So the city will pick up the tab of over 2 million?
Correct.
Right, but for tonight, we're just discussing the 1 million.
Yeah.
And that'll come back later, that'll be another discussion.
Yeah, but it's, we, we spend a million, and then we're, we're going to be on the hook for the remainder, which will be 2 point something.
The $3 million would get the facility to what it looked like before. We can spend a lot less than that just to fix what is there now, but it's going to look the way it does now. When it was initially built, it had a lot more glass, windows, but for some reason, they were covered up with brick. And so, one of the things that needs to be addressed immediately, though, is that the roof had built-in drainage into the roof structure, kind of like, like, like a soffit, but it was in the middle of the roof, and for some reason, it was, it was covered over so that the water wouldn't drain, it would just collect there. And so over the years, that water collecting there kind of seeped through the, the concrete and the other barriers that were there, penetrated the interior of the building, and that's what started to chip away and fall into the, the structure. And so we need to make sure that the drainage system that was initially constructed is rebuilt and reinstalled to allow for the water to continue to seep out the way it was intended when it was originally built.
So the alternative is, is just bulldoze the whole building down?
Yeah, if that's the route you want to go that way.
You said we could fix it back to the way it is, when you say we could fix it to the, the way it was, you mean, the way it was recently?
No.
No, when it was first built.
Oh, when it was first built.
You have full historic res, restoration.
Didn't it have glass?
Yeah, exactly, it had glass.
So that's what we're, that's what we're doing, putting the glass back and all that?
Well, not, not with the million dollars, no.
No, I know, but with the, ultimately, with all the funding.
Yeah, that, that is, remember, I think John Piercy said that right now it would cost us 3 million to bring it back to its original glory. If we raise it and then reconstruct it, it'll take about 6 million to do the exact same thing.
And does the glass make a, well, I'm assuming it does, but does the glass make a difference in the cost?
Yes, because you have to remove the, the wall, and then rebuild the structure to install the glass.
So if we just, like, what I'm trying to get to is, so if we may, if we just build it back to the way it is right now, and just fix the roof?
We need to fix a roof, there's a few other things that need to be fixed.
Yeah, but I'm talking about without taking it back to its glory.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, but if we just get it to, like, because like, right now, it's basically used like as a, as an event center for like a quinceañera kind of thing. So if we were to get it back to the, to its ability to just hold events, how much would that be?
I need to get back with John.
I think it was like 1.2, 1.5.
Yeah.
That's the way I remember it. It was about a half, no less.
So do I, but I, I, I just want to make sure before I tell you a number.
So could you use hot funds to do just that? Is, is, or is it hot funds, were able to use it because of preservation?
Because we're doing historic preservation, right?
So, so.
Not renovation.
Okay, so if you were just to fix the roof and make the changes, could you still use the funds, I guess is the question?
Yeah, because if you look at even the thing that Desi gave us, bullet point, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6, no, 5, it says historical preservation, right?
That's, that's how I understood it, so then, so then the, if, if the, if the commission wants to go to the direction of the least cost, that would have to come out of the general fund or other buckets, maybe the 4B, but not the hot funds, and so, if we're going to use, trying to wrap my head around this, but it sounds like if we go the right route of hot tax, and that's the amount of money that you're going to spend from the general fund, and then you get it back to where it needed to, where it was before, and if you don't do that, then you still spend the same amount of money in the general fund to, to do the repairs.
And, and right now, the hot, general fund has a balance of 2 million, we're only proposing to take a million dollars for that, leave the other million there for other, other projects that the commission wants to do, perhaps sports, pickleball events, things like that, so.
I really think we need to work on, and I guess we're kind of deviating, but just an actual, something that's going to bring people in, so a league of some sort of, for Harlingen would be nice. But today's focus is this item, so is there, is there any other, any other discussion? Mike?
Yes. My reasoning for opposing this, one, it's not practical, two, we're going to be competing against ourselves because the convention center belongs to us, and we, we still, we're in debt of 9.6 million plus, so I don't see how we're going to be, I cannot justify that to myself, to try to work on the Casa del Sol and then compete against the convention center. Some of those hot tax funds should be applied to the convention center to where we, the city, can promote the convention center and feel that the convention center with, with conventions, with activity, month after month, and I don't see us doing that. We've yet to bring in a state convention of any sort into that. We've had some boxing events, we had that, the International Marathon, but those are few and far in between.
We, we had a, a state Public Works Conference scheduled for the convention center, but we had to relinquish that event because of COVID, and the National Guard was taking up every single room available in the Hilton Garden Inn, and including the rest of the town, so we didn't have any space to, to house all the delegates that were going to be turning, so that, that happened. And then we've already secured a statewide Telfer Conference in 2026 in the convention center, so we are working on a few, but not, not.
We need to do a lot better.
Oh, I agree. And matter of fact, Brendan Rainey from BC Lynn will be here next week to talk about how we can partner together to actually get more conferences there.
Could we at least spend a couple of hundred bucks on putting out little signs that says convention center that way, or this way? Because I don't think we've seen it, I don't think I've noticed anything throughout the city.
I, I talked to Javier Segura about that last week, and so we, we're going to check with TechDOT, because those signs would be on the expressway, and so they control access to all those signs, so we're trying to get them to actually work with us to get that done.
You know, I just worked with UTRGV, I don't know if anybody knows, but at the Harlingen Convention Center, they just put on a big convention for nonprofits, and so I worked really closely with them, and they had in attendance 250 attendees at the convention center, and it was statewide, so local nonprofits and those throughout the state, and it was a very, very successful event that was on Wednesday of last week, I, and I try, I swung by quickly, but it was, it was at, it was full, and it was a wonderful event, and so the convention center is doing things that just sometimes, I think that if you're not in that space, you may not know what's, what's going on, but it's, it's been pretty busy over there, I've been impressed with what they've been able to, what they've been able to do, but we can always do more. So my question would be, Commissioner Morales, what, what do you propose that we do with the Casa del Sol if it's, this is not the, the path? What is the solution?
You want a solution in two seconds? If the only solution is to destroy it and save ourselves some, some more debt, I would be in favor of that, because we're competing against ourselves, okay? And we're going to go further into debt. We owe 9.6, we're going to end up doing what, 6 million, and we're going to restore that to its heyday back of the 60s or 70s. And that's, you're looking at 9 plus another 6 potentially.
Just, just one piece of information that you probably should know, if you rent the Casa del Sol, you rent the facility, you can bring in your own food, your own refreshments, adult or not, and, and if you rent the convention center, you're not allowed to bring in your own alcohol or your own food, you have to buy it from there. So I think that the, the uses of those two facilities is completely different.
But you just said it, if the convention center, by regulations or whatever, state law, or whatever they have going on, they have to sell their alcohol, and they have to sell their own food, and they're competing against some, an entity that you can bring in, and all they do is rent out, lease out the, the space, and lease out, and sell the, the drinks, soft drinks, and ice, so you can bring in your own liquor.
Not, not at the Harlingen Convention Center, no.
Casa del Sol.
Yes, you can.
Casa de la Mista, when you're competing against that, they have less chance of securing and, and doing events, and that's something that I'm opposed to, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
So that's my argument.
I think it may be worthwhile to have a conversation with Gabe when we're offline about the legislative priorities and how the, the mayor has come up with a pretty good plan on how to resolve your underlying concern of the convention center. That may be a conversation you need to have, which will resolve that concern. So I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of a million dollars of the hot tax fund to go to Casa del Sol.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed.
Okay, so, moving on.
Item 11, board appointment.
It did not pass, opposed?
Yes.
So opposed.
Opposed.
Oh, you were opposed to?
No, I voted yes.
Oh, I said aye.
Oh, okay, I had understood that incorrectly then.
So it passed.
It passed, okay.
Item 11, board appointments, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any positions subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or bylaws.
All right.
I have none.
None. None.
None.
All right. Okay, moving on.
Okay. Item 12, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor, however, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Item 12A, pursuant to Government Code, Section 551. Item 12A, pursuant to government code section 551.071, attorney consultation and contemplated litigation, section 11, 551.072, deliberation regarding real estate and section 551.087, economic development relating to the following projects, Project Beach, Project Emerald Green, Project Distillery, Project Spec Building 3, and then item 12B, pursuant to government code section 551.072, attorney consultation regarding sale purchase of real estate.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. The time is now 7:05 PM and we will retire to executive session, be out shortly. All right. The time is now 7:51 PM and we are out of executive session. And Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible, possible action on items 12A, 1, 2, 3 and 4 as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to acknowledge report and pursue to discuss.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that is all we have. We're.
No, we.
Sorry. Item 13B, consideration and possible action on items 12B as discussed in executive session.
Acknowledge report, I'll make a motion to acknowledge report and pursue to discuss.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we are adjourned. I forgot the second.